...notices as required under bylaw one forty-four two thousand and seven, public is advised that council's intention to adopt the following at its March twenty eighteen meeting. Nothing. Declaration of pecuniary interest, anyone? Okay, confirmation of minutes?
Yeah.
I didn't take it, you put it there.
I got these two.
Okay. Moved by myself, second by councillor Goss, that the minutes from the last regular committee of the whole meeting held February thirteen two thousand and eighteen and a special committee of the whole meeting held February twenty two thousand and eighteen be confirmed as written and filed.
On behalf of council, opposed of any, carry. Okay, this morning we have two deputations. Uh, the first one, Jesslyn Watt, Cloverbelt Local Food Co-op, local food, full lot?
All right, hi guys. Uh, my name's Jesslyn, I'm the Cloverbelt Local Food Co-op, uh, community coordinator, uh, for the Canora area and also Red Lake. Um, this is kind of what I came here today to, uh, we're coming to the end of our food charter, um, and the end of our funding, and I wanted to present to, uh, city council just on how great Cloverbelt Local Food Co-op is and what we do for the community. I can go to the next slide, perfect. So, I'm not sure if you guys are aware what Cloverbelt, um, is, we've been around, um, for a while, but basically Cloverbelt Local Food Co-op, it's a nonprofit, multi-stakeholder co-op, creating food accessibility through online farmer's market with regular scheduled order cycles and connecting communities with local goods redistribution, uh, sites spanning three hundred and fifty kilometers across northwestern Ontario. Uh, CLC's objectives is to increase visibility and accessibility of local foods available for purchase, to educate our community and surrounding areas about the benefits of eating local, and to increase local food sales. Um, background, so we have a website, um, developed, um, throughout two thousand and thirteen and launched in December of that year. It started with a hundred members in Dryden area and now has over fourteen hundred members from across the region and over a hundred and forty producer members, um, distributing to multiple communities and collaborating with industries and communities to develop and deliver locally beneficial projects and initiatives. So, right now, we basically have, um, we order every single week in Canora, and they order every single week in Dryden, and then once a month, uh, Thunder Bay Places in order, Upsla, Ignace, um, we're launching Red Lake by the end of March, um, Sula Cote and Fort Francis. So, some of the projects that we've done is northwestern Ontario Local Food Map, uh, two thousand and fourteen, two thousand and seventeen, education coordinator, um, which is community and consumer education, we did a community greenhouse, um, agricultural coordinator, and that was to increase institutional sourcing of local food and increase, uh, producer capacity. Um, so leveraging local food purchases in northwestern Ontario, two thousand and seventeen to now, um, so we have four community coordinators in Sula Cote, Canora, Rainy River and Thunder Bay, to create and grow community hubs, to increase the amount of Ontario food products purchased by wholesale distribution and food service markets, enhance capacity of small and medium-sized farms and processors to access mainstream markets, and streamline local product purchasing and distribution, and strengthen local policy to support Ontario food purchases and expand current transportation network. Um, so the regional food charter, uh, project is develop a food charter for the Canorian Rainy River districts. A food charter is a value, a vision or principle statement and or a series of goals written by a city, town or region that is broad-based in support and describes what a community wants in their food system, uh, to look like. It is a reference document for municipal decision-makers, a food charter raises awareness and education about food issues and forms a basis for action. A regional food charter can provide a platform for connecting eato- um, eating local food projects across municipalities. So, the regional food charter, in partnership with Lakewood University Center, uh, for Sustainable Food Systems and Research Network, northwestern health unit, municipalities and other key partners across the region, and regional approach to encompass all small communities and municipalities, opportunity for collaboration, uh, shapes the vision in the future of use of local food in the region. Uh, it's a reference document and provides a unified and clear set of principles for the basis of food procurement and decision-making and policy development. So, our timeline, so from May to August two thousand and seventeen, community input sessions, so, uh, we went to different community areas and, uh, did general and directed community input sessions, schools, hospitals, um, and different groups in the area, interested in learning community manners, priorities for local food system, and sessions held in Sula Cote, Canora, Earfalls, Atticokeen, uh, Emo, Stratton and Dryden. So, September to November two thousand and seventeen, the survey development and circulation, so input condensed into a survey circulated throughout the community municipalities, community groups and social media to get people's, um, inputs, really pushed that survey, it was a long survey for people to fill out, uh, but we got it handed in. Um, and right now, so December two thousand and seventeen to March two thousand and eighteen, the draft charter development and circulation, so final opportunity for community feedback before the document is finalized. Um, so this is kind of a look of what the regional food charter, um, looks like, I'm not going to read out every single thing, um, but I do have a copy of it, uh, that I gave to Heather to circulate, uh, for the council members as well. So, main points, our vision, we'll engage with all residents of our region to respect diversity, diversity of approaches, to sustain thriving local food system that supports our health and wellbeing in our communities, our environment and our regional economy. Purpose, create just a food system that ensures all members of our community have access to adequate, healthy, safe, affordable and culturally appropriate food. Uh, guide points, overarching principles and priority areas of focus, actions, education, local farming and food production, health of the ecosystem and social justice. Um, so next steps, so we're collecting feedback on draft until the end of March, so I'll hand out, um, a little survey that you guys can take a look at, this one's a much shorter survey, it's only about five questions. Uh, so the final version ready for endorsement in early spring two thousand and eighteen, we're looking for city and town council, townships, organizations, First Nations and institutions in northwestern Ontario to endorse the document by implementing action items and working collaborative to achieve the communal vision. Regional participation offers, uh, opportunity to collaborate for education, funding and local food initiatives, transportation and infrastructure. Um, so that's basically about it, we're basically just looking for everybody to get on board, um, right now, we only have, um, our funding is done end of March, so my position turns from a paid position to a volunteer position. Um, right now, I run my hub off of volunteers and so does every other hub, I have about ten volunteers that rotate every single week for distribution, um, basically the online farmer's market, it opens up Saturday afternoon at two P M. and it closes Monday at ten A M. and then the orders are picked up by members, um, at, uh, Broken Paddle, uh, in the evening. Um, right now, I have about four hundred and fifty members, um, I'd really like to see that tripled, since I started, it's already climbed, um, and we're also opening up, um, a hub in Red Lake, which is super exciting, I already have sixty members and we haven't even launched it yet. Um, so, we really want to continue, um, doing, uh, the Cloverbelt Local Food Co-op, so I appreciate your time today, thank you.
Thank you very much. So, says follow the road of good things growing Ontario? Does this follow the road of good things growing Ontario?
Yeah, so a lot of local, a lot of local producers and farmers, they're just small family farms, and a lot of them are really big too, who are really closely with the Arboretum and, uh, the Rainy River district, and a lot of them want to do wholesale ordering, so a part of that is being brought on, also to move on to work for ordering wholesale as well. Um, unfortunately, we're just not there yet, because we're the first restaurant to order wholesale in Canora, we would really appreciate it.
Oh, good. Thank you. Okay, our next deputation, Hannah Holgarkey.
So hello, um, I'm Hannah Holgarkey, I'm speaking on behalf of the Canora Recreation Centre student staff regarding the recent wage change. As you all know, uh, the provincial student minimum wage has gone up to thirteen fifteen hour as of January first of this year. So, we're here to ask that the previous student wage step level plan made in two thousand and ten and renewed in two thousand and fourteen be upheld indefinitely as they were taken away from us. The report stated that the steps would be in place as to which position gets what pay based on the responsibility and training. A pool attendant gets paid minimum wage and a lifeguard with an instructor with two years gets paid fourteen twenty, and that was in two thousand and seventeen. With each increase in provincial minimum wage, the report stated that each position would be increased with respects to the amount minimum wage went up. A pool attendant requires a minimum of bronze medallion and emergency first aid, which ends up being thirty-two hours of in-class training and a cost of two hundred and sixty-six dollars, therefore getting paid minimum wage as per the report. A pool attendant cleans as well as runs the top of the slide guarding no lives, but has the capability of assisting in an emergency. An assistant guard needs the additional training, a bronze cross and standard first aid, which combined is seventy-six hours with a total cost of four hundred and sixty-nine dollars. This position as per the report would get paid seventy cents above minimum wage. An assistant guard, in addition to the duties of a pool attendant, can watch a pool alongside a full guard. Furthering your training by taking the water safety instructor course is a total of a hundred and forty hours and a total cost of seven hundred and fifty-two dollars. This position as per the report would get paid fifty cents more than an assistant guard. This allows the employee to teach swimming lessons. As a student, we teach about thirty percent of the children, but bring in a larger percent of revenue for the facility from evening and Sunday morning swims. Without the water safety instructor course, but adding the national lifeguard standard course. With the same responsibility as a union guard, and as per the report, this position would pay fifty cents more than an assistant guard. With all previously stated credentials together, a total of a hundred and eighty hours and a total of a thousand dollars and seventeen dollars is required. This position allows the employee to participate in guarding, teaching and become responsible for any and all emergencies that arise, making this the most stressful position and allowing for an increase of a dollar thirty more than what an instructor or a lifeguard would make. The report also states that with each year in said position, a forty cent increase is given as a reward for dedication towards the facility and the city each year. We would also like to point out that these hours do not include the time outside the course that are dedicated to practice and to maintain standards. These courses have to be recertified every two years for an additional hundred dollars every time you want to recert. These courses also take place during the times that we will be working and therefore deprive us of shifts and money that would be made. Our training doesn't end here and we are asked and encouraged to further develop our skills past these certification levels in order to provide further programming for the public. As student employees, we work the bulk of swims at night and on the weekends, in two thousand and seventeen, we guarded forty-one thousand two hundred and forty-five users of the aquatic facility, and that was with two-month shutdown. Dealing with the bulk of swims also means that as students, we are dealing with the bulk of injuries, we're the people that write up the most incident reports and the more certified you are, the more first aid you will administer. Moving up in the ranks also adds stress by responding and being first responders. Two pools and pays their assistant guard thirteen sixty-six, lifeguards or instructors are paid fifteen forty-eight, and lifeguard and instructors are paid seventeen twenty, they also receive an annual increase for each position. Fort Francis Recreation Centre has one pool and pays their assistant lifeguards fourteen twenty-five, their instructor and lifeguard sixteen twenty, and a student senior guard sixteen eighty. Red Lake pays their lifeguard seventeen ninety-five and their instructors get paid nineteen twenty-five. We also want to share with you the wages of our peers at various places around the city. Walmart pays students fifteen fifteen as a starting wage, subject to periodic raises. Subject, or Subway pays students fourteen dollars with discounts, Shoppers Drug Mart Pharmacy pays students fourteen eighty-eight. Noferl student employees get paid thirteen fifteen with periodic raises, Tim Hortons gets paid thirteen fifteen with periodic raises, rewards for referrals and performance bonuses, as well as a jump in wage with becoming a team leader. These jobs get paid less due to no external training except what is provided on shift and paid for in similar fashion to us completing WMS orientation and our monthly inservices. In conclusion, we are only asking for the steps to be put back in place now and for future years so that an attendant will now get paid thirteen fifteen, an assistant guard will be paid thirteen eighty-five, lifeguard or instructor will be paid fourteen thirty-five, and a lifeguard and instructor will be paid fifteen sixty-five. Each position will be paid an additional annual raise of forty cents. We are also asking to get retroactively paid as of January first two thousand and eighteen when the student minimum wage increased and the original steps were ignored. And that's everything.
Thank you Hannah, and, uh, councillor will be having this discussion with the administration.
Thanks.
Okay, finance and admin, two thousand and eighteen Christmas closures.
I think it's pretty straightforward, yeah.
Yeah, well, yeah, Christmas.
Six, seven years.
Yeah.
Right, but this is closure for five.
Because of the Monday.
So, my question is, it happened six, seven years ago, the last time? What kind of, obviously now we've got a much more robust communications process, um, can we, were there any negative pushbacks from the public at that time?
Okay, good. Canora Sports Hall of Fame, I don't need application. Again, this one's pretty, well, hit it Matt? Pretty straightforward, just.
So, it is chartered, but, uh, this is, uh, support of council, this is a community foundation.
Foundation, so. You okay with that? Oh, the big one. The drinking water system. Jeff, could you read this whole thing to us, please?
So, yes, just recommending that the council, uh, see for anybody who's used the twenty-seven P. sorry, right, or just summary point for, uh, twenty-seven.
Now, there's, um, before I get in on it, any, uh, questions, council? Counselor, sir?
Not much of a question, not much of a comment, every time I read this research report, I'm always impressed, uh, the staff training, the field objectives we have, the hours, um, that I mentioned, water system, um, facilities, I'm at all, I see that we have waiting for ninety percent, and ninety percent over the last reports, and I think that, um, that, uh, is very indicative, uh, of, um, hopefully we monitor our water and water system, that citizens can be, um, confident in that we have a good system, and that we have anything more, and that those issues are, uh, just, uh, staff is working, yeah. I, I just think of the food reform, food, food reflection of the water system.
Anyone else, councillor McCallum, I think you just might, oh, there's, you know, the room, I just had, councillor Sharon's, we have a ninety-nine point nine one, that's a good communication, with the water system. Actually, it was interesting that the number of freeze-ups were down because we had such a real problem with it, probably in March.
Oh, you had to say that, didn't you?
Yeah, it's March.
It's starting to come, right?
When the frost goes down.
Forget what I just said, Jeff, you're okay. Thank you.
Thank you, anyone else? Okay, uh, a few things on here, the, uh, the alarm dial-out system, what, what is the, um, uh, the problem with that?
Well, it, it was certainly, uh, issue with the system, we are looking at it differently, so, uh, try to, with, uh, the system a little more, uh, we're really, uh, so, uh, it's, uh, something that we would, uh.
Yeah, when you, when you go through this, the, um, um, yeah, you, anyone thinking, running for council, that's where you have to have a good idea what's going on besides your staff, thank God we've got great staff, um, because the liability, when you go through it, liabilities are ridiculous. But the, the other one in here, is there, if I read this right, Jeff, I think there's, is there just, uh, one lift station now without a generator backup?
Uh, well, is the lift station issue related to the generators, uh, with, uh, with your office, and, uh, has a lot to do with, uh, food, environmental issues, if it relates, uh, I, my knowledge, we have generators in all of ours, to check on that sort of issue.
Oh, there was just, there was one, I'm trying, I've got a lot of pages folded over here, and, uh, there was one here that was, uh, standby, it's got the standby power on, on all, like all the standby power and, and I, I believe, or if we go back to two thousand, New City, I don't know, other than maybe one or two, that we had backup generators on any of them. Um, but then it, because of Waukatoan and the green water, I, we had to back up and, and, uh, you know, people wonder why cost of water keeps going up, and when you, when you take a look at the, what we have to do in order to keep, uh, water, you know, safe and, and, uh, you know, people still buy bottled water and bottled water is nowhere near as safe as town water. And, uh, so when you take a look at some things, there was, there was one here that, um, I'm not sure which one it was, mine portage booster station. It says standby power, says no. I don't know if we have these, uh, five there now or not.
I will follow up on that.
Yeah. But I mean, yeah, overall, uh, trying, that other one there, testing at the beginning of the system, trying to remember off the top of my head. Testing at the beginning of the system, we've been testing at the back of the system, this was something and, and, uh, I thought, well, that would, I thought it would make more sense to test at the back and then when you read the, I guess, our auditors' report.
Uh, the, uh, how was the, uh, test?
Right.
Two spots are, uh, there are, uh, uh, testing the front.
That's what I would have thought.
I think this is what would be, uh, the, uh, the, uh, right.
Can I just come up with a question?
Absolutely.
Jeff, I'm not sure if the question as well, uh, but to this, but it came up, uh, with our, our, uh, sewage treatment, et cetera.
Of what capacity of the, uh, our system are we, we're well below our capacity, our, our facility, uh, is, uh, brought to the order, it's, uh, it's, uh, possible.
We're at thirty percent.
Yeah, I was just, I think, yeah, when you look at the portals, you, uh, bring all that, uh, I think we get up to approximately, we're, we're well, our capacity, probably.
Thanks.
And there was nothing behind the question, so.
We have room for growth. Okay, any other questions? Hey, that's okay, um, next one, uh, Reverend Mike Lees, little Jeffrey Melick office.
You have just the standard, uh, one year, Lees is actually representing us, absolutely.
And the, um. Yeah, yeah, no, no, I'm more, uh, the increase was seven, seven and a half percent. Over the five years?
Yeah.
They, oh, councillor.
There was, um, normally there's a lease attached, so there's, all this is the report, so, no, there was nothing. What is, are they responsible for, is it property taxes, is there sewer water, is the city responsible or is the tenant responsible for all those additional expenditures?
Pretty sure they're responsible for sewer water, but, of course, we own the building, so.
Yeah, but I'd like to see, because we're approving a lease, but I don't know who's responsible for what, so I'd like to know that before I.
Okay, any other questions on, uh, the lease? Okay, the next big one, the investment readiness assessment project. Do, do you want to give us a quick overview, Matt? Sure, and then I'd take away a lot of the questions, it's a little easier to read than the drinking water one.
We don't have any chemicals or anything happening, but, it's not me about there, but, uh, nonetheless, uh, so staff.
Bigger letters, too.
Yeah, yeah, staff, um, commissioned, uh, Sweeney and Associates, who, uh, is a economic development improvement firm for, uh, municipalities across Canada, they've done some great work, so, the intent of the, uh, exercise was over the span of three days and the, um, principal of the firm, Eric Sweeney, came to Canora. And, uh, the day one was an exercise whereby he was applying his agents, uh, acting, uh, one of the business owner, who wanted to expand his business, develop a certain order small manufacturing facility in Canora, and we had to respond as a staff, so, uh, day one comprised of welcoming him to Canora, um, having a luncheon, a network luncheon, and presenting a higher-level, uh, twenty-minute, uh, PowerPoint on what Canora has to offer, um, what we do here, and then, um, you know, answering a Q and A portion. Uh, around the table, we had the division, department heads of the city, we had some business owners, we had, uh, Fed Canora and O H F C representatives, uh, people coming to help, et cetera, so, um, community, uh, influencers who could answer any questions, uh, for the potential investor. From there, we went and toured, uh, Eric and Sweeney around the city, uh, we targeted some private businesses, uh, we set up meetings with business owners and management of those businesses, and then we targeted some potential sites, uh, for him to develop his business. Uh, we tried to elaborate on as much as possible on those particular sites, and then from there, uh, he said goodbye for the day, and then we went on for our next, uh, county sessions the following day. That next day concluded an exercise with staff on, uh, our development improvement process. So, what I had, my team was prepared for presenting, uh, to the group at large, and we prepared on how we go through our development process, um, and the real intent of that exercise was to identify some gaps and really potentially, um, identify some suggestions from a third party on how we can improve on that. I think that is, uh, a huge learning curve for everyone around the table on how we can improve, and from there, we developed, obviously, the agenda package, you can see, um, all this, a project plan, all this of short meeting and long-term goals, which we extrapolated from Eric's suggestions, which we heard from in the afternoon session that day. Uh, and in the afternoon, what we did, we actually, we had some councillors attend as well, and Eric, um, provided an overview of best practices and of suggestions on how we can improve as a municipality, uh, as a, uh, bureaucracy and as a government, at the government's level, so. As you can see from, moving on from there, in the memo and as well in the investment readiness assessment implementation plan, um, we extrapolated a few key projects that we could undertake in the short, uh, medium and long term. So, I think a few things that are really, uh, um, important to note here, in terms of short, uh, term, uh, we all agreed around the table that our economic development website could use, uh, a bit of a topic, and I think that it's important to note that, uh, the economic development website, planning portion, et cetera, were very much linked, uh, which is what we focused on through the entire exercise. So, that linkage of welcoming a business owner in, uh, and providing the most information that we can as an organization possible, will really attract as opposed to having the client ask all the questions. So, the economic development website update is looking at really providing a site selection tool and a land inventory. We don't have a land inventory online and it's important. We don't have a land inventory online and it's important that we identify, we're already taking this exercise, the vacant parcels of land that are developed, uh, identify all the information and pull that together, so it's just an easy user experience. We don't have that in our just yet, so we need to improve upon that. And I think from day one, if you are an investor coming into a municipality, you're going to go on the website and look for the, that land, or you're going to look for the, those vacancies, um, and it won't happen. So that was the one off is that we can do that right away, we have all the expertise, uh, within community development services and Mo and I, uh, as well, that, uh, we can pull that inventory together and even that, uh, on some different situations and we're, we're a company that is done. Um, and also just kind of squeezing up the aesthetics of the economic development website, any modern photos on there, uh, you know, those are, those are easy fixes and quick wins, I think, from, uh, the entire organization's perspective. And in addition, uh, creating that marketing piece of quick facts and in addition, the community profile as well. So quick facts, I mean, that speaks for itself as to what that, uh, entails. The community profile, uh, the consultant indicated that this needs to be completely reviewed. Uh, he created a community profile, which he has asked staff and we're, he can work on that, we have all the data. It's just a matter of putting it together in a nice, uh, presentable piece, getting it, um, you know, marketed and ready to go and put up online for someone to look at. So we have that updated data and we can, from there, attract that investment readiness. It also shows that we are putting our money where our mouth is essentially and providing that updated standard piece for investors coming. Uh, another one that, uh, we're really pushing here, and we've started, uh, once we have staff back, there's some staff who didn't pay for it, and it's mapping of the development approvals process. So looking at, in the planning portion of our website and just actually as a printout piece as well, getting something visually attractive to show, um, someone, you know, from day one, they come in and they want to get a zone file on them, for instance. Who do they, getting that kind of flow chart there and perhaps deviating, what if we need to go for a line area and what if we need to go for an official plan then? Something like that and showing that approvals process. Yes, there are some sidebars that may occur, but just getting that visual piece up, really pulled from multiple municipalities in Ontario across Canada and show what they have. We just need to get up to that level, so we're putting that together and that's another important as well. Um, a medium term, um, medium term plans here that we have is an active strategy and a marketing plan, a marketing plan. An economic development strategy, um, is really taking that comprehensive focus, um, tying it into our official plan somewhat. So what's interesting here is that we have OP method as a legislative by the planning act that we need to go through in the next eighteen months. Uh, we really are looking at revisiting that target and seeing if we can tie in, um, an active OP management strategy. So of course it'll be separate, two separate plans, the official plan and then the economic development strategy, but making sure the language matches up a little bit more. And the target of the growth and identifying the OP matches somewhat, I would say, with our economic development strategy. That's very important because there's a little bit of a disconnect there, so we're going to be focusing on that as well. In addition, um, on the flip, on the flip side of that page there, uh, we have some other, uh, shorter term plans that incredibly speaks for itself. Um, one that will be coming forward, I think, that I should identify the council here today is the site plan approval policy. Um, the city planner will be revisiting the site plan policy. Uh, this was identified, actually it pointed out in discussion, uh, in our development approvals exercise that the site plan policies, it provides too much red tape with them actually, and we're seeing this, we're experiencing a lot of our difficulties right now is as a result of the site plan policy. There's a lot of, you must consult, you must, you, you must, that's a little bit of a turn off. And in fact, that's not really legislated through the planning act, so we need to improve that streamline that policy a bit. So that's a very short term goal that we can get done in the next couple of months. Um, upgrading maps speaks for, speaks for itself rather. I think one that we can, uh, talk about is shovel ready investor lands. So the consultant spoke about, um, Kenora really focusing, investing on its tourism and the downtown, which was an interesting one because, I mean, the Kenora model for the last decade and a half and we, I speak about it all the time, it's really attracted to the city. Is, is revitalized your downtown and invested in those tourism pillars that, uh, attract people to the city grows, um, hundred fifty percent, two hundred percent summertime, right? And in the middle of shoulder seasons as well. So the consultant indicated that, you know, if you really want to attract and invest in, uh, perhaps you need to, you know, we've got that in place, but maybe you need to look at, you know, we have some Indian land at the airport, we have, uh, Indian land in, in the to me spaces, you know, we have, we have a lot of land. Sure, maybe on Bedrock, but you know, some that you can develop, whether you're some that an investor can develop and get shovel ready. Um, and there was a lot of, I think, the green light applied because, you know, we pride ourselves on being that destination location. I think that that's fine, but maybe we need to have a revisit as we're going through our OP strategy, you know, making all this new cover. And maybe targeting, um, another sector that, um, you know, we can bring this up to council, it looks like the council is listening to do so, but maybe targeting another sector that, uh, would help us grow that labor force. But we also need to look at covering that for the labor force side, because if we target, uh, manufacturing or something like that, the question is, do we have the labor force to fulfill the job vacancies or the job demand? And from a staffing perspective, probably not if we're going to target manufacturing, so the question is how we attract that. And I think a lot of these tools in our implementation plan will probably do that. It's just a matter of, you know, over the long term, have the patients who strive to do so. Uh, a catch twenty-two that we've seen basically when we were talking about, um, industrial land is a lot of the land that many would identify as being ready for investment or subdivided, ready to build up by the airport. And council knows what has gone on, that airport industrial land, people who owns it, et cetera. And that may be a difficulty from a safety perspective to attract, um, business there just because of the ownership model as turning in existence. So I think that's a conversation that we can have, uh, in the future with regards to that industrial land, how we can work together in partnership, um, with the airport. And I think that is a, a strong relationship already, so maybe it's just a matter of opening up those conversation pieces and discussing, uh, the city's intent to grow and maybe identifying new sectors to attract business and looking to use the airport as a roadmap.
I think you answered them all. Counselor Goss.
Yep, I, uh, I really liked this, I think it's a pretty honest and, uh, very enlightening critique and you've got a lot of, a lot of takeaways for staff in there. Uh, the one takeaway I see for council is, uh, I boldly underlined it, underestim, underinvesting in economic development. And, uh, I think that's something that council should be looking at as we move forward. We have to get serious about this, we've done a great job with tourism, I understand that, uh, the, the idea that we've overfocused on tourism, I don't know that that's necessarily a fair analysis, you could say the room went quiet at that point. But I do, I do appreciate that we are probably seriously underinvesting in, uh, in our economic development and that's something we should be, we should be looking forward to and I hope we meet the next council takes that and, and, and ones with it.
Counselor Smith.
Um, Matt, I, I appreciate your overview and I think you answered a lot of my questions and, uh, definitely there's some excitement there. Um, I found the report to be, in a positive way, kind of blunt to point out where we need to grow, like the webpage. Get rid of the narrative in plans and have more focus on, on plans and diagrams and flow charts and bullet points. And when I first, the first read I had of, uh, of the report, I thought, where is this going? Because I wasn't seeing anything happen until I got to halfway and then it started to look in with, okay, here's the gaps, here's the things. And again, more the, the fact of the tourism piece, uh, stood out to me too. You know, high focus on tourism, but we should be looking at other things, but I didn't think that in a negative context. I think you build on that to a roll, so I, I think it's a good report, um, and hope for it.
Counselor Ray.
Uh, Counselor Smith and I were, uh, took part in the, the assessment, the afternoon sessions and even though what they talked about tourism, that wasn't focused. The focus was on what do we do well, where are shortcomings? And the thing that was impressive was you saw the whole team around the table. You had building, you had the planning, um, economic development, and then you had the other groups, operations, you know. Everybody's a, is a part of how we're going to do this better, it was a team approach. And the gentleman that led the session, he was pretty blunt, you know, where we were short or had some shortcomings, he did not sugarcoat it and where we did things well. You know, so I found the session was one of the better sessions I've been to because the whole exercise, staff was forced to, like Matt said, treat them like an investor and they ran through an entire exercise and all the time he was critiquing it and figuring out, you know, what do we do well, where are shortcomings? And there was good interaction with the staff and the staff took, uh, Counselor Smith for some reason answered a question and then he focused on her and she did some, she did some.
Fancy dancing.
She did.
That was before the surgery?
I just, I thought it was one of the better exercises and I was impressed by our staff and everybody's engaged and you could just see that they're excited about moving to these next stages, so it, it was very good.
So I have a few comments because as Counselor Reiner said, I was at that session and I don't know why I took a class. Counselor Reiner was there and I took the brunt of his misses on council direction.
I actually, I let him know because it started, he said, he wants to look back and I said, no, it's hard to look back.
I was very impressed with the session. So again, I'm very happy that we did this exercise, it's a long time coming. I think it's now going to allow us to focus on, um, what we need to do and stop old chain of content that we have. I just want to clarify that with the comments around the tourism piece. Within that session, I was quite surprised to hear him say that is to move on from the tourism piece and talking, I told more on other aspects of economic development. So just in defense of that, I think that when we talk about the tourism piece, we always, and I just, I think we, um, just finished term on council, we knew that by focusing on C I P's community improvement, uh, by focusing on our trails about when, when our green space will attract people into our community. So I think that was an important piece of that puzzle and now we're more with that, so I think it was good to see that. And, um, I was very surprised after being on council for, for the time I've been, I've been on council, to see that we didn't really have a property in Kenora on that because it's something we've been talking about for a very long time. I was very surprised to see that our maps were where they should be. And I was very surprised to hear that, um, um, we weren't having properties. That we wouldn't, you know, it was only attached to those properties. And I think that it would be something that's happened a long time ago and I'm looking forward to having that updated for sure. And I'm going to ask you, when we do update that piece so that, um, development and new place election, will they have access to the private sector, um, uh, properties also, whether it begins to leave the old state? Will we be, um, working with gold so that as well as looking at the city that comes along, when we pull that?
So without saying too much, we've been a half hundred years in the area, so is the city's intent to discuss with the, um, private builders on how to best move forward and partner with them to provide a comprehensive in, in?
I think it's critical because, because when, um, developers come in and we own that, now what the economy's doing, it's using on the site. So it's important to develop that, to develop that piece.
And, and we have, uh, we have, um, research, uh, staff on, to see what are those kind of, uh, what are those tools, are those databases that update the good time? Uh, when properties are sold or, um, you know, or they, or they're, um, come up, come up marketable for sale. Private end of things, so they do have a good deadline, how, um, those interfaces have the greatest, that has the risk of being canceled. So when we get to that stage and we put in the cash, we should both be necessary.
We started that again with our green space, one of the problems we made, the cities are going to downsize, we always have downtown. And I see that, um, I was glad to see that quality of life, that, that people, that, that, one of the things we're doing because, uh, when you, when you get to, when we were in the room, we talked about the kind of, um, um, industries we should be trying to attract. And now you're going to go back and you're going to tell your council, kind of, that, we know we're going to be focused in what markets we need to focus on. I was, um, surprised to hear him say that focusing on educational institutions and other levels of government is just another form of taxpayers wanting, we're only looking for the market. And I thought that was interesting that he said that. And so, um, now when we start looking at types of markets that we're going to be focusing on, I think we tie into the labor force data, which is, I'm surprised that we don't have more, that M F A's been out there for years, we've talked about this for years. The labor force data is such a critical piece and, um, companies are choosing to invest. The two biggest things you can look at are energy costs and labor costs. So I think it's good that we're going to start getting that data and I'm happy with that, isn't it enough? I know that we have a huge, a manufacturing sector in this community, that, you know, there's a lot of people that are employed in that sector, um, in this community. But a lot of those manufacturers are looking for, for mill rates, they're looking for welders, they're looking for truck drivers and they can't, um, there's not that labor force in this community. So I think in addition to looking at, we look at the, uh, the educational institutions, you know, the, the mentorship program and the community, you know, the mental health. To see what we can do to, to ensure that that information on the, the training, um, how do you get that to bind and critical things, it's dark, we think, we don't have a labor force here. Cool, or we probably will be able to locate it, they're going out there. I think that, that is a, is critical also. The site plan, um, um, when you look at your site plan, I'm glad you looked at the process, I'm glad you looked at it because that's something that has been there for a long time. It was too onerous, we're putting too many, um, um, conditions and restrictions on developers that do not need to be, uh, so to eliminate some of that, um, but they're going to be a great thing. So I, uh, I'm really happy that we've done this study. I think now that we have good staff and things, we've worked really hard to, to keep up the economic development, um, um, positions and the planning, um, department, and we're coming from that. I think we now have the staff in place, we now have a plan and I think we're ready to go forward, so I'm, I'm really happy that you've done this. Now we want to talk to the council and we will.
Counselor Woskies.
Counselor Smith covered everything, I was going to talk. I just, uh, is there any effort being pushed strongly in regards to the First Nations communities which feed into Kenora, which is a large number? Uh, is there any kind of, uh, plan that that you're working with with any of the native organizations like Bimba Se?
And I'll, uh, I'll brief counsel on that.
Oh, you, that's coming.
Yeah, in a new kind of sense.
In a new camera.
Yeah. Uh, my second is, uh, where are we at in regards to age groups of people? I mean, there are people like myself who are getting old and, uh, I'm forgetting, you know what I mean?
Maturing. Maturing.
No, we're, we're regenerating, but I think, where are we at in regards to age groups that are maintaining life in Canora?
So, and actually, council will get in and break down this in April, but we are, we are an aging population, actually, so the, the, what is it, the baby rumor generation, we have a lot of rumors, and they are, they take up the bulk of homeownership here, and so what you're, what we are trying to do, from a industry perspective, is trying to attract some housing that, um, it'll then provide transition for that demographic into smaller, uh, core frame of housing, so that that opens up our housing stock for, um, the generation wise, which is the millennium cohort, nineteen to thirty-five, um, because what we're seeing with that cohort is that the millennials, is that they're seeking , um, higher healthcare, because they can't find, or, the market's saturated now in Canora. So that all kind of links in, so a good question, I mean, it all links into this entire implementation plan, promo planning and economic development standpoint, we're having, it's all like the housing stock's saturated, we're not getting that development, um, and as an extension of that, I think we have a, a, a sector here, but that's also saturated, I mean, but then you could sidebar and say, you know, the restaurant industry's having a time of change, and, and, and getting, being checked in, et cetera, which is a, which is a common threat in, in municipalities, especially in other provinces. So we need to then begin to, maybe it's for other industries that will help increase the younger demographics, um, the millennials and the gen, the generalized, the general factors, or, you know, below the millennial cohort, so, um, we have a lot of work to do in that. But what I can say though, is Canora is, um, correlating with other communities in terms of their, um, population demographics and breakdown. So you see a lot of communities that have, um, high population, maybe, or higher seen values than, um, than, than, than the lower, um, age demographic. You know, larger cities are a little different, but especially mid-size, smaller cities in Canada, they are all really correlated in terms of the breakdown of the seat.
My, my last question is, in regards to how are we moving, well, again, I asked the question about what, what population is, because that was, would be in regard to housing, but what are some of the strong attractions that you see that we can entice people to come? I can't choose a better word than entice, but.
Yeah, I mean, well, what Canora's invested in, in the last decade and a half, is tourism and tourism, so the downtown is quite attractive, um, because it blends in the natural asset right, right across here, it's the lake, right, and the surrounding, uh, natural environment. So that blending, um, of natural to the built environment is really strong, and that attracts, that attracted it here, um, and I'm, so that, that is, you know, and within that, you have a lot of opportunity, you have a lot of opportunity to live, work, and play, so those three things will attract, um, that cohort. Um, I think the barriers are, um, it's, you know, probably time to mix more diversifying, to attract more, um, investment in, in, in that, so you get, you know, for example, someone who's twenty-five, who wants to go to school, they're moving to that, but then they'll see that in, in the past, perhaps there are opportunities to gain employment, or perhaps to start a business, because there are resources that have been invested to assist them to start businesses, or what happened, or they, they have net worth, and they want to make further whatever, right, so, and then the opportunity is more, so you've got to look at that diversification model, and look at other sectors, um, capacity dependent, this entire exercise.
Good, very good. Counselor Gil, just one, quick, quick one, um, I think the other thing, front of my thoughts question was, Dan Coucher, that is, one of the key elements, I was a team member of the, the staff that, 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 you know, make the work, and I think the other one is a phrase that we often use in the past, is, um, instead, instead of saying, this is our developers, which I have to do, shifting to helping them, working, I mean, my sense is with this document, the most dependent to the press to it, is that it's over the government, that, that's, that's going to be the, um, motto to take, and mantra to focus, um, again, hope for it. So the report is still that, you know, in everyone, in the organization, in mind that we don't have to keep, keep it, hope we'll finalize that, we don't have to, we don't want to show.
It would be, it's, yeah, it's just, that's just going to bring along that, we all should pay, you know, report, and this exercise, if that is going to affect issue, right?
Yeah, thanks, Matt. Great, great presentation, great response to the presentation, and, and I think in, going through some of his comments, I was at the first session, and I take from that the, the property we're talking about, where he set the business up, the owner wasn't there, and that was, you know, when you look at that, I said, well, I don't know, because we used to have a, when I read part of it, and I was, wait a minute, now, we, we had a, basically a catalog of available properties, but we didn't have them on our website, so we, we had that, economic development had that, we just didn't have them on the website. So that was, so these shortcomings, I was really impressed, you know, some of the way you presented, the fact that these are easy, easy tasks to catch. One thing that I, I really disagree with him on, and, and that's, just want to hear the overall sense, Canora's more concerned with tourism, and voting on economic development and industrial development. First off, we, they should do an assessment-ready process with the province of Ontario, because we are right beside the province of Manitoba, we're in the province of Ontario, and when you compare the two, whether it's red tape, electricity, or whatever, we don't even come close. And so maybe he, he should take a look at that and go and, and, and do this exercise with the province. It's okay when Toronto, these mass builds mass, but the thing is, we're right beside Manitoba, and it's tough, and, and when, you know, when I read this, I'm going, I was actually getting a little angry, went, hold on a minute, tourism brought in W, the, the new Marina, they've, it's brought in, we have actually two manufacturers of DUCs and LIFs process, we have, you're talking good jobs in, in, in the Marina, Marina business and, and manufacturing, DUCs, LIFs, and everything else, and I think, really, and, and I had a little chat with him about that, but obviously not enough of a chat, and I just said, you realize that, and, so I think he's really missed that, and, and the other, like, all the, all the work that comes around that. And one of the reasons after the mill flows, because nobody's building paper mills anymore, and for a short period of time, nobody was building sawmills anymore, or any other manufacturing plant, and we were lucky to maintain, uh, warehouse there, and then our horse products getting back and running. I, I, I believe there is great opportunity in expansion now in the, in the manufacturing se, sector, especially around the natural resources and mining, we've been continuously seeing, and I actually did talk to him a bit about the Avalon, the Avalon mine up north here, and, and, and the manufacturing sector, the, the services in Canora, what's, yeah, what's the, Riverview, yeah, Riverview, they supply a lot, and there's, and there's more, and there's more worker growth, so I, I, I thought that was, um, I don't know, what are you stuck at that? Nobody's going to build mills anymore, big manufacturing plants aren't, we tried to diversify, we have some, I think maybe the one where, is there, are we going to become the next Silicon Valley, no, I don't think we're around big enough population, but, but is there opportunity, opportunity around some of them, yeah, maybe there is, so, so, but I, I mean, overall, yeah, I, I like the bluntness, I like the fact that, and at the same time, one size doesn't fit all, as I always say, and you, you have to know the, and, you know, now for the rest of the story, and, and understand why we concentrated on this, because it was a big win, and if you take a look around Northwest Ontario, or even Northern Ontario, this community has, has popped out of that downturn in that, in that, um, in the force sector faster than anybody, because we grabbed the low-hanging fruit, and, and so, but overall, I think it was a good exercise, even though I have that one disagreement, but I, I, I really like the idea, I think you're in the right track, and I, you know, the whole team concept and streamlining stuff is important, so, so, yeah, looking forward to the future.